Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, August 30, 2022. I do call the meeting to order and thank the public and certainly thank our friends here at WCAT for being patient with the school committee while we were had a bit of an extended executive session, just coming out of executive session now and prepared to begin the open meeting as the agenda speaks. As we start all meetings, let's please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, the reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next in the agenda is public comment. Any member of the community who wishes to address the school committee on any matter, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not, is welcome to do so at this time. There was no one here in the studio. Is there anyone on Zoom? Ryan? No? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to item number seven, Chair's comments, reports, and recommendations. I want to make note that we, under Chairman's comments tonight, we were going to be voting on the renewal of the superintendent's contract. That remains in discussion and in negotiation. Those conversations are going incredibly well and productively, but we are not prepared to take a vote on that this evening. So we will not be voting on the superintendent's contract tonight. We will likely be doing so at the next meeting, but we'll have to, you know, stay tuned. So, item number eight, Superintendent's remarks and reports. Dr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mr. Markham. So just some quick updates. This past Friday, we had a meeting with SMMA to review our schematic design of different locations that included WCAT, as well as special education offices and central office. And so that's, that was part of our review. We also reviewed and discussed educational technology and what we should be allocating and what the design for that space should look, or the classroom should look like. The challenge in kind of having that conversation, it's a bit of, it's like doing a futures protocol, in that you're having a conversation actively about technology that we're going to, that's going to be implemented four years from now, or when the new school is built. So it's, it's a little tricky. Some of that information, or a lot of it, is known, and some parts of it are still kind of emerging, right? And so, but I just want to let the community know that things around the high school conversation around construction and design are certainly heating up, and there will be kind of meetings, there will be several meetings a month. All the meetings that take place with Left Field and SMMA will be open meetings, but I just want to let the community know that those things are happening. Also, in the summer, we, we had a meeting, we had several meetings with Dorothy Presser, who's a leader from the Mass Super, the Mass Association of School Committees, who's, who is reviewing our policy handbook, which we're pleased to be able to report. Other information, moving down the agenda, just a COVID update. In the last meeting, I did share that we would, when we opened school, be following the Mass DPH guidance that came out for schools. On August 15th, we will no longer be quarantining. If, if a child or a staff member tests positive for COVID, they must isolate for five days. If after five days, they are not symptomatic, and they are fever-free without fever-reducing medication for 24 hours, they may return to school and also should be wearing a high-quality mask for an additional five days. In the event that students can't wear a mask, they can test, take a rapid test or an antigen test, and if they test negative, they will not need to wear a mask. And that goes for adults as well. And that information, and the link to that information on Mass DPH was sent and shared with faculty, staff, and there's a hyperlink in our letter that we sent to parents today as well. So that's a very quick update in regard to COVID. More to follow there. A reminder, some parents have asked, and I'm sure they've asked you in your travel while you're traveling around town, will lunches be free this year? The governor did a vote back in July, July 28th, and we have said this at this meeting. I know a lot of people have been away for the summer and are unaware that lunches will again be free this year, right? And so that's important information for people to know. We are also very actively working with our IT department and to implement Power School. Do you remember, we spoke about a year ago about the need to kind of replace IPASS, which is our student information system. We have adopted Power School, and the plan is to kind of migrate the information that we had in IPASS over to Power School. Our IT team is working on that actively, and there will be some information forthcoming from schools to parents to support them in kind of opening or kind of getting on and logging on and getting their student information squared away. So more to follow there. Just a little bit of news in regard to human resources. Today was the start of our induction program. So we have 40 new faculty members in the district. On scale, we have about 360 faculty, right? So we have 40 new staff members, which we are really excited and fortunate. We have, I think, our administrator, our principals, and our curriculum coordinators have done an amazing job hiring this year. I will also tell you that someone who needs considerable recommendation for the work that she does in induction is Elizabeth Doucette, Liz Doucette, at the middle school. She is in charge of the induction program. She takes this on like she's coaching a basketball team, right? Everyone's in their place, the practice is choreographed, and everybody's moving, and, and there's no, no one is off task. And so we need to kind of give her a special recognition and thanks for the amazing work that she does in that space. Also want to say thank you to the teachers that are giving their time to mentor new teachers to the district. So all new teachers, new faculty members to the district, counselors, teachers, in any position, are assigned mentors. And so that's, we're really pleased to be able to support staff in that way. And those meetings that happen throughout the year are also organized through Elizabeth Doucette. She invites Kara and I to meetings, to talk to new teachers, to best coach them up and, and welcome them to our district and acclimate them to, to all things Wakefield. So that's, that's a piece. I also want to let the school committee know and the community know that I had shared at an earlier meeting that Glavia Smith would be leaving the district. She has reconsidered, and, and we had a conversation, and she has rescinded her resignation, and we have welcomed that with open arms. I think we feel like it's fit, couldn't be happier, couldn't be happier there. Angela, in the Metco program, Angela Driggers will also be moving from the parent position at Greenwood that she was in to an elementary coordinator position that is funded through the Metco grant, so it is a budget-neutral move, but it will also provide greater support to students and families in the Metco program at elementary school. We have a coordinator at middle, and Glavia is in fact at the high school, so that kind of creates a continuum, elementary, middle, high. That's, that's a very quick human resources update, and, and it's a very, very quick report on all of the things that are happening in the district. So happy to answer any questions that anyone might have at this time.
Steven?
And I know we talked about this, Doug, but back to the Power School, that platform. When can, do we have an idea when parents can expect sort of messaging on?
So it's my understanding that's going to be messaging this Friday.
Great.
Right? And so Thursday and Friday. And so, so they should be getting information from their schools, parents should be getting information about how to log on. We're also kind of setting up supports. If parents are struggling or if they have questions, they'll be able to contact their school, and we'll have kind of teacher leaders or administrators that can help in that area as well, and that information will be forthcoming as well, you know? And so, and we, tomorrow, we're also working on creating a little instructional video around, if you get this letter at home, this is how you go on. We will kind of give you a step-by-step kind of tutorial on how to get on and get your student information on and get all that done. So that's, that's the plan right now, and I, Stephen, I appreciate conversations and questions that you've had for me earlier in the week around parent support. I think that that has really been a prompt for us to talk with the administrators. We had a district-level administrative meeting around management and operations earlier this week, and actually yesterday, and we actually kind of broached this subject with them based on conversations that we have had. And I think that they are enthusiastic and excited about being able to really support, and we're going to have some personnel in tomorrow kind of creating those instructional tutorials.
Thanks. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you for other questions.
Kevin?
Are there breakfasts that are offered free as well, or is it just lunch?
So breakfast is offered free as well. Okay.
Breakfast actually came in prior to COVID. We started a breakfast in the schools, and then, and then this would have taken that on as well.
Yeah. Yeah. So in addition to letting you know about Glavia and, and Angela Driggers, I also just want to remind everybody that we are welcoming Dustin O'Brien, our new Director of Food Service, to the district, and he is a, he's going to be a full-time administrator working in Wakefield. In the past years, we've shared this position with Redding. They have decided, and we've decided together, that we, based on the needs of our programs and the needs of our students and families, that these positions will become a 1.0 position. That is a budget-neutral move because the position is funded through food service. Yes, Mike?
Two questions, Doug. Has Dustin started yet?
No.
What's the date?
Next week.
Next week, and can he come to our next meeting so we can meet him?
In September?
Yeah.
I think we can get him if he's available.
Great.
Certainly, yeah.
Super. Big shoes to fill.
Yeah, no question, right? No pressure. Yeah.
Amy?
The Power School, I know I asked you this already, but will all the information from IPASS migrate into Power School so we could look at history as far as report cards and whatever else is housed in there?
So I asked, you sent an
Yeah, I did.
question earlier today, and I asked this question at IT, and the answer was yes.
Okay.
And that includes report cards?
Yep.
Yes.
And then separately, does kindergarten start later on the first day of school than the pass it had?
So kindergarten will have a modified schedule.
Okay.
We will get that out to parents.
Okay.
Right? And so, and also just to let everybody know, in our last meeting, I spoke a little bit about MCAS, right? And if you recall, that it seems like so long ago now, right? And what was a prompt for us to have a conversation, or was a prompt for my comments, was really the meetings that were happening at the state in regard to the changing of the math competency determination. The score for math is being increased to match that of ELA. And, and kind of I shared some information just around, I had said, when we review our scores, we will also review the competency determination around how that has changed, and what it, what it takes and, and kind of what the requirements are. Because it's pretty complicated, and it's not as straightforward as it might sound, right? And so, but we can review all of that information and talk about how students are progressing here in Wakefield. We also have met with Kara and the curriculum coordinators in math. We've met with Val Dreinen and Lindsay Moska to really think about and talk about raw scores, to think about growth. One of the things that we really want to focus on this year with students is just this notion of growth, right? Instead of comparing, you know, Doug to Tom, Doug should be compared to Doug in regard to how, if that, if you understand the example that I'm creating here, in regard to if I'm, if my baseline is, is here, I need to be, I should be looking at kind of increasing or getting better in terms of where I stand in mathematics, or in English, or in science, right? And those are things that I think we're really going to try to focus on and anchor the conversations. And I think that the curriculum coordinators and Val Dreinen, I think that they are very open to that conversation. Is that fair, Kara?
Yeah, absolutely.
So more to follow there.
Great. Any other questions? Doug, I have one. You made, you made note that for the induction program and our 40 new staff members. I think that's terrific. I do have a question about how many positions do we, are we still seeking to fill, and what is the relative difficulty? I know there are a handful of positions around the district that are very difficult to fill. Are we still sort of in that space, or
Yeah.
where might we be in some of the more challenging positions? Like, what some of them, what are some of them?
Right. Yes. So I actually have a list of open positions that I can share with the committee members, and we can make it part of our, of our, of our meeting minutes, right? And so currently, we have 27 positions open in the district. About two-thirds of those positions, about 18 of those positions are standard positions that we post every year at this time. So when you hear that there's a shortage and it's difficult to hire, there's no question. That is absolutely true. And right now, and I said this in our last few meetings, you know, our, our faculty and staff are being recruited to go to a number of different places, and a number are just kind of staying, you know, right with us. But in regard to the 27 positions that we currently have posted on school spring, about two-thirds, or about 18 of them are standard positions that we have open in regard to substitute positions, substitute nurses, float nurses. So those are standard openings. We have another kind of nine, nine or 10 positions, really nine positions, that are really kind of critical for us to fill, and, and we can kind of talk, I can share more in our next meeting on those. But they are positions like para-educator positions that are supporting individual students, that are really important for us to fill, and we will get them filled by the start of school, or we will kind of figure out how to backfill and reassign someone to those, those spots, because students need support, and there's no gray there, right? And so I hope I answered your question in regard to number of positions that are open. I actually have a breakdown by school, by level, if that's helpful. Yeah. But this is the Amy Lehman report. Good man.
No, my, my inquiry was because it is not atypical at all
Yeah.
to, to begin a year or to be a week out
Yeah.
from a year with having some vacancies and
Yeah.
still with some, you know, some, some struggling to, to, to find positions. And there's still probably movement. People are still probably coming and going, and
Absolutely.
so it's a moving target. So I appreciate
Yeah.
that as a dynamic. It's not, it's not going to be completed one day. It will, it will always be
Correct.
always be something in the mix.
Correct.
I'm curious, Doug, how many did we lose? How many did we have?
How many resignations did we have?
Yes. You have retirements too, obviously, so I'm
Oh, oh.
but, but how many resignations? How many did you have to fill?
Retirements at the end of last year.
Yeah.
But just this week alone, we've had four resignations.
Okay. Wow. How many would you say you've had since the school year ended, roughly? Ballpark?
Well, it's been, I mean, are you talking from cafeteria workers, like district-wide? All, or are you talking about teachers in Paris?
So the 600 employees that we're talking about?
Right.
Seven bargaining units.
Let's start with the, maybe the G, some of the teachers, is that right?
So I don't have an exact number right now?
Yeah.
Right.
Put you on the spot.
We can put that on the addendum for the Lehman report for the next meeting.
I'm just curious what the normal churn is.
Yeah. It's, it's, you know, the notion that
If there is normal.
we're, we're having some resignations at this point is something that I don't think we've seen in, in the past number of years. This is the start of my eighth year, and I don't think we've seen, and again, we don't have a massive number of resignations. You know, we have had three, I think, three resignations, you know, for, but that feels like a lot for us. It feels, that's a hard letter to get, or a hard email to get at this point in the year, especially when, you know, some of the personnel that are in these spaces have been amazing for us, and amazing for students and families. So when I say us, please understand, I don't mean us administratively. I mean students and families, right?
Okay. Thank you.
The only thing that I had left on my agenda was a motion to approve handbooks.
Correct. So why don't we make that motion, and then if you have anything to, to say?
Sure.
All right. Motion?
Okay. Move that the school committee approved the four student handbooks as revised, reviewed, and presented for the Doyle Early Childhood Center, the WPS Elementary Schools, Galvin Middle School, and Wakefield Memorial High School, effective immediately.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Dr. Lyons.
So we've done, we've kind of looked at our handbooks a little bit different this year. So we've actually given, turned the handbooks over to Policy and Communications Subcommittee. We've taken feedback from the Policy and Communications Subcommittee, and all of the notes that they have provided on text, on format, on information, we have considered on how best to incorporate that into the presentation or reformatting and updating of the handbooks. So that, the information is incorporated in the new documents that we shared with the committee, that, and also that have been on the table for the last few weeks. What's also taken into account is an update and feedback that we've gotten from
Our legal counsel.
Right? From Michael Joyce. So all of the feedback that we've gotten, both from council and from the Policy and Communications Subcommittee's, has been incorporated into the new formats and the new presentation of the handbooks that we have shared. One of the things that you will see, and the parents will see in these handbooks, is they will see things that are hyperlinked. So if they're looking at something that pertains to bullying, they might see a link to information about how to report or what the policy might say. If they're looking at other parts of information, or people's email that they need to get in touch with, I think they can hover over a name and, and they can get that information. Am I missing anything there, Kara?
No. It was just about kind of the consistency district-wide and just having easier, to go through it a little bit easier, which I think you covered.
So I think, to be honest, I think this is the most consistent in regard to presentation and accessibility that the books have ever, I think they're, they're most accessible.
I think so.
They're more accessible now than they have been in the last number of years. So we appreciate the Policy and Communication feedback and the time that it takes to go through and, and to ask the questions that you have asked and, and the feedback that you've given, not only us at the district level, but principals as well.
Any questions? Amy?
It's our feedback. Is that all right?
Our feedback, sure. Absolutely. Come in.
So I just want to thank the policy. I kind of snuck out of that one. Our policy had changed. So we were originally going to do it, Kevin and I, and then it changed. So I just want to thank the Communications and Policy Subcommittee for that work. These are 100-page documents that they went through. There's a lot of detail in there, if any parents. If you, if you have a question about the school, usually the answer's in the handbook. Just a couple of things that I, like nitpicky things. There's no time in there, about a half-day dismissal, and that question comes up a lot throughout the school year, and each school has a different dismissal time. And I remember last year, wasn't there, I think you screenshotted it too, there was like a cheat sheet? And I think it was under the calendar that said all the start and stop times of the schools plus the half-day dismissal, because parents have kids in different schools, so you'd be hopping from different handbooks, or, so I don't know if we could get that cheat sheet.
As an attachment to the calendar?
Yeah. Do you remember what I'm talking about?
It used to be a page three after holidays.
Yeah.
And that like a picture of the school, and it would say
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was helpful.
I think that's easy enough to do, and then it keeps it out of the handbook. Yep.
Yep. I had a question if it was updated in real time. So if like, Assistant Principal, because right now, there's a lot of names in those handbooks. Do they go in, or is that just one, once a year?
Well, now, correct if I'm wrong, I know it was going back between Word and Google Doc, but now I think it's all able to be updated, whereas before it was, yeah, it was, it was a big process.
It was a snapshot. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So now all the names, all the information has been updated, and that includes the associate, if we're talking about personnel
Yeah.
that includes the associated email addresses of those personnel.
But if someone were to leave mid-year, would the handbook be updated, or is it wait till the next year?
No, we would update, that's, that's what we can do
Okay.
with the document. So right now, we're, we're going to upload PDFs.
Yep.
But we're, we're going to kind of keep them in a Google format so that we can make edits and kind of move them back and forth.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I noticed, when you go to the district website, you have to click on a school. The Galvin's calling it the family handbook. All the other schools call it the student-parent handbook. I don't know if we want to pick a name and land there, if that's even important.
They should all be called the same thing. We can, we can touch base with Galvin about their family handbook.
So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
Kevin?
More comment than, than feedback. I kind of concur with what's already been said by both Dr. Lyons and, and Ms. Lehman. I thought these documents were really well-done. They're very clean, easy to read. I was clicking on some of the links. It's very convenient. And so I just wanted to thank the administrators, the others in WPS, the Subcommittee as well, who worked on this, because I thought they presented really, really well, and clearly a lot of work went into it. And I think people really benefit from the clarity and the, the way that it's now organized. So great job.
Can I just, did Diana Ho get special recognition?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say.
Because she really
Go ahead, Karen.
She created the whole format, and she's one of the people, you just tell her like, here's what we're thinking, and she just
Can you share about her work this summer and what her current position is?
Yeah. So Diana Ho is our library media specialist at the high school, and she does a lot of tech support for us. And she just helps with a lot of different formatting. She does our social media. She is also, as a next step to this, helping us to format faculty handbook. So she's really great at that whole, just kind of putting to life what, what our vision is. So she was instrumental to this. So I'd like to thank her.
Yeah, it looks great.
Yeah, that hyperlink is like a huge improvement.
Yeah.
Sorry, I read the handbook a lot.
And you have, Kevin?
Yeah, I just really appreciate being lucky enough to be on the committee that actually had a look at the handbooks. I mean, you wouldn't think that going through these, you know, handbooks, you know, it's necessarily, you know, you're, you're fun, midsummer afternoon. But I think one thing that always interested me about, about, it's like policy versus practice. And I think one really interesting thing about, I went through the high school handbook specifically, and I think it not only could answer questions that parents would have about basic, like, you know, stuff that's going to be happening during the school day, but I learned a ton just by looking at different things being, and, and being able to ask questions and saying, oh, okay, this is what it says, but what really happens? Like, how, how does this actually work in practice? And I thought, you know, the feedback that, you know, Amy gave back was really fast and great, and I, I definitely encourage parents to like look at it, and if you have any questions, just, you know, email administrator. I think that, like, there's, there's some things I learned that I never would have learned if I hadn't been in this process, and it definitely gave me some insight into, you know, just some, how things practically work in the building that is really useful. So I definitely encourage parents to look at it, you know, maybe not during the summer day, but maybe a nice cold, nice fall, fall Thursday or something.
Rainy day.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, I'm done. That's it.
One of the things that, if, if I can respond, one of the things that we're going to try to incorporate this year is more of a dynamic space where if parents have questions or suggestions, that they can make them incrementally, and that we can think about how we might be able to respond. So if we can, if these books can be dynamic, and parents are signing off, and if we can change things like names or format, there's no reason why if someone has a brilliant idea about information that we're presenting, and we can get that information and kind of incorporate it, that's something that, that, those are edits and things that we, we should be working be working toward making. And I think that the person who, I think, again, can't go, I think, I don't think we can kind of provide enough recognition for the work that she's done in this space, is Diana Ho. And if you recognize the name, Diana is also the person who, in our education plan, I think I shared this in a meeting back in May and June, we got a note from MSBA that said, you know, your education plan was remarkable, especially the information around the library media space. Could we have permission from the Wakefield Public Schools to use this as a model on the front page of our website in this area? And, you know, obviously, we talked to Diana, and Diana said, of course. But she kind of did that, so she's a remarkably skilled young woman, and someone who I think you're going to be hearing more from, so she's great. But that's it for me.
Steven?
Just one last, to sort of be back on what Kevin had said, just as part of the process of being sort of a different approach to doing the handbooks, I appreciate the, sort of, the patience that the administrators had for our questions, they were really fast with their responses, they were thoughtful, and there was also good questions from Eileen and from Kevin, you know, about the handbooks, and so to every, sort of every point that was raised was a good one, and there were good answers to them. And so, it was definitely a nice process, and I think a little bit more fruitful than maybe some previous years, and so I hope it's maybe something that we can sort of continue with, because I think there is value. And so, an absolute thank you to all of the administrators that took part, and Diane, obviously, and also you folks for helping facilitate it. It was a good process.
Excellent. Very good. Okay. Well, I think all the comments have been, certainly, I would stand behind all of them, and thank everyone for working on, for working so hard at making this a, something, handbooks that are certainly not only new and improved, but are dramatically more useful, more user-friendly than ever before, so, thanks to all that contributed. So, a motion has been made and seconded and discussed. All in favor? opposed? Passes unanimously.
Great job.
Next motion?
Move that the school committee approve the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook as presented, effective immediately.
Second.
Any comments to share on the Student Rights and Responsibilities document?
Nope. This is something that has been part of the handbook, now it's accessible through a hyperlink, so that you're not, you know, shuffling through a hundred-page document. Now, you can just click on a link and get to the Rights and Responsibility section. Yes.
I'm sorry. So, is it going to be housed separately as a link, or within the handbook, and you click out?
So, it's going to be housed as a hyperlink within the student parent handbook that exists. So, if the document is twenty-two to twenty-five pages, if you go to the end, you'll find a hyperlink there
Okay.
That will say Student Rights and Responsibilities.
Okay.
Parent, click on that, that will bring them to another document that will have all of the citations in regard to the Mass General Law, that are standard parts of every handbook, and that need to be there per legal counsel.
Gotcha.
Right? So, yeah.
Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none. Again, thank you to the administration and the committee for the review of this. One of the things that, for the community's sake, one of the things that we thought important to sort of separate out these motions, was really to call out that there is a, that there is a special place to find the Student Rights and Responsibilities, and not just embedded in a larger document, that they could go specifically somewhere and find this as a unique document, which I think goes a long way to also improving the type of transparency and the type of information that's more readily available. So, thanks to the committee members and the administration for working on the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook as well. Motion made and seconded and discussed. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Anything else, Dr. Lyons?
No, sir.
Okay. Future dates and agenda items. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September thirteen, at seven thirty PM, here at the WCAT studio. By that time, school will be underway for about a week, a little less than that, actually. No, just about a week, yeah. So, certainly, we'll look forward to some opening of school comments, a little post-mortem about some of that, and certainly, anyone that had any thoughts to share for future agenda items, either please make comments now, or reach out to Doug or myself, and provide those requests.
I have a few.
Yes.
Not necessarily
You want to share them now?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
Not necessarily at the next meeting, but if Rosie Galvin could come in and give an update on special education, I know there's at least one new program and some new hires that were approved, and as part of that, or separately, if she could give a readout on the pre-K, since we now have a new classroom at the Woodville, I'd like to understand the percentage of special education in each class, and make sure it's evenly distributed between the Doyle and the Woodville. And then, if Val Drinen and Lindsay Moska could come in and go over the seventh-grade math change, maybe mid-year, to let us know how that's going. I know the email only went out to families who had incoming seventh graders, but if this is something that's going to stay within the district, all parents should hear about it. Yeah, that's all.
Okay, great. Any other suggestions or comments at this point? Certainly, don't hesitate to email us at any time about that meeting, or any meeting. Okay, going, comments going around the table. Let's start here. Kevin Fontenella?
So, in the district I work in, today was our first day of school with students, and yeah, I just wanted to say, the difference between this year's first day of school and last year's first day of school, fair warning to all the administrators here, and definitely to all the teachers that are out there in Wakefield, yeah, night and day. You know, the students hit the ground running, I mean, they were engaged, I was actively teaching day one, it was really great. But I think it also, you know, maybe, it made me think about, at the end of the day today, how important this year is. I really do think that the importance of this year, not just here, but everywhere, really in the country, it's super important, because, like, this is really the first full year back, where I think they're thirsting for, to be ready. I mean, we had, you know, I have one class that has prototypical problem kids, and man, they were awesome. Like, everyone was engaged, like, we, and I really, I really think that this is the year we really have to be, you know, really, as teachers, as a staff, we really have to be looking and not drop the ball. I think that, you know, I think the students are ready, from what I saw today, and, you know, all of us are really excited, just very different than last year. In terms of just general happiness and mental health, not even talking about the academic aspect, it was really positive what I saw today. I know it's nothing to do with Wakefield, but I just want to say, looking for this year, it really got me thinking about, man, like, I'm thinking about my own kid selfishly too, but man, I think that, you know, this is, yeah, this is definitely the year to really, you know, push on and, you know, accelerate our way out of the last two years, so. Yeah, that's it, just my little insight. And Mike, yeah, that was a red pen that exploded.
I'm sure it was. Did you just stab yourself?
No, no.
Okay, just checking out. It was very inspirational, by the way. Yes. Shall I go next?
Mike, please.
Yeah, so I'll kind of combine the Subcommittee with this, because I don't think we have an agenda topic for
We do not.
Okay, so, I don't have anything to report.
We purposely don't, but okay. You can certainly wax on if you will.
Just two points, so we haven't had, we haven't had our Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, which would normally, I think, be this Thursday, but I know kind of opening day, so there's a few activities going on that morning, so I pushed it off till next Thursday for our, will be our second meeting of the new regime, so to speak. And also, at our last meeting, Erin Creesos had talked about having sort of a WEA Parents' Forum. I know some of us were on the call, I think it was last week, if I recall correctly. Great idea. Attendance was a little light this time, you know, it's a tough time of year, of course, so certainly hope they continue to do that going forward, and get some good dialogue going with the parents, hopefully, so, just a beginning stage, hopefully it grows substantially soon. That's it. Thanks, Don.
Thank you. Steven?
Yeah, just want to kind of welcome everyone back, as we start in next week. I'm seeing a lot of sort of message boards about all these startup activities that are happening with principals, with kindergarten meetups, with, and it's just fun to see that energy. On top of Kevin's comments about sort of the students being ready, I see families being ready. I think, I know, working in, sort of, just being in multiple spaces in town, volunteerism is always a hard thing, it's hard to get people engaged in whatever's going on, and just the, people seem electric right now, they want to sign up for everything, and I think that's just great. It shows a community that's ready to bounce back with the kids, so I'm hoping that we just see an outstanding level of engagement, WEA meeting aside, you know, going forward. And so, a lot of sort of, you know, back-to-school nights, and maybe some science fairs, and sporting, it would just be so great to see our community back. If people wanted to attend something tomorrow night at seven is the community forum for the Wakefield Memorial High School, so there'll be an informational session from MSBA, and Leftfield, I think, will be there.
SMMA.
SMMA, too many acronyms. And so, yeah, so people should attend that as well.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I just want to, today was the fifth grade orientation at the Galvin, and there was a group of eighth-grade student guides who did an excellent job, they were, I got to see them, did you go, were you there?
My kids.
Yeah, they were so welcoming, they all had red shirts on, they like sought out the students, brought them in, they had signs, it was, they did a great job, so I just want to thank whoever led that. And then, I received a lot of positive feedback on the kindergarten literacy, and I guess the other districts are very envious that we do run that in Wakefield, and just to wish everyone a great first day next week.
Kevin?
Two things, just to kind of build upon what Steven had mentioned, you know, at the last PBC meeting, you know, the project's starting to take shape, and every meeting, it gets more and more exciting, so definitely really encourage people, just to reiterate what Steven said, seven PM tomorrow is a community forum, and I think those sorts of things are important, and certainly hope people continue to become engaged in this process as we enter later into the fall. The project's really coming together beautifully. Just want to welcome our new team members and wish them well as they start their career here in Wakefield, and then welcome all our returning staff back as we gear up for the start of the year. I want to hope that they had a great summer, and looking forward to a great year.
Great. Thank you. Eileen?
My kids did attend the fifth grade orientation today, and I thought that that was really well-done. They came home very happy and excited for the school year, and, you know, going from the big fish in the little pond to, you know, going to the Galvin is always a little scary, I think, but everyone kind of set them at ease, and my boys were lucky enough to have their cousin be their eighth-grade guy, so that was always a nice little bonus. But, yeah, that was really exciting, and I really like that the district does that, and kind of sets their mind at ease going to a new school. And, yeah, want to welcome everyone back, and welcome new staff, and we're off to, you know, hopefully, a good start at the beginning of the year, and as Kevin said, it was, I think it really is an important year, and I think everyone's excited. I know I'm excited to get my kids back into school, I don't know about anyone else, but I'm excited, so I'm going to keep that encouragement going.
All right. All right. That's awesome. Well, everyone had such wonderful comments, I just want to support and reiterate what has already been shared. So, I hope, again, everyone had a wonderful summer, I hope the administration and team had a chance to relax a little bit, and take some much-deserved time, and certainly welcome all the faculty and staff back, and wish everyone a wonderful first day next week, and wonderful kickoff to 2022, 23. So, without any further ado, motion to adjourn.
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, August thirty, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.